If anyone else.
Well, we.
We're switching to order.
Alright, so for tonight, we've got a couple matters that have been on, I think, three and four times, so. You know, hopefully. You know, you've got the information that you're gonna need to run through the elements for each of these to make a determination on them tonight. Let's start with KJ Estates, just because I think it's simpler. If everyone remembers, this is the one. It's currently before the planning board, but there's no approval because there's currently not sufficient capacity. So basically, in the meantime, while they're waiting on capacity, the developer has come to this board looking to get a variance to allow for. Putting roofs on the decks to turn them into porches. So the reason this one wasn't voted on at the last meeting, if everyone remembers, it was inadvertently left off the agenda. So we wanted to hold the public hearing open to have it again today. That way, in case anybody saw that the agenda didn't have the site on it and didn't show up, you know, they wouldn't. You know, come back to us this month and say, we didn't know about this. It wasn't on the agenda. So just out of an abundance of caution, we kept the public hearing open. And then, you know, we should be able to run through the elements for an area variance on the lot coverage for this one and make a decision. I don't know if there's any questions or thoughts on it.
The capacity issue is the water issue, right?
Correct, yep.
And that is not gonna be, we don't know when that will be resolved, but that's not our issue.
Correct. Yes, yeah, it's up in the air right now. You know, I know Ken and his engineering team have been looking for water, you know, everywhere they can. So, you know, eventually. There will be water, and once there is sufficient capacity, then all these projects that have been held in abeyance will go back to the planning board and, you know, complete their applications.
The ask is really a five foot, five percent, I mean, a five percent increase in ground cover.
Correct, yes.
Right, well, they want to pass, they want to.
Off the five percent, five percent.
Off the five percent. Well, they want to keep it at thirty.
They want to reserve their rights.
While they use twenty eight, they want to reserve because they don't want to be applied.
Alright, so for all intents and purposes, we're talking thirty. Up the five. It's not a big ask.
No.
Alright, yeah, so this one, I think, is pretty, pretty simple as far as the review goes. We've had it a few times now, so, you know, the board is. You know, aware of it, and, you know, at the end of the day, it's up to five percent, and some folks might want to enclose or to put the roofs on the porch, and some might not. As far as conditions, I would do similar to what we did on the other project that kind of did the same master plan for porches and just. Include that the porches will never be enclosed, and also that proper drainage, you know, via gutters and things of that nature will be included. So that would be my only kind of extra recommendation.
Yeah, I don't think anyone has done anything.
Very simple.
He's pretty. Brian.
Not have it changes last time. Paul Carey was.
Right. It was a technicality, the other one. This is very simple. Alright, now let's go to show and tell. We, it, it, Eliana, Eliana, is she?
Hi. Hi. Let me see.
And to Moishe, the, for going to see the other, and I appreciate the pictures, and Kerry. This is what I, what I, that did come out in the pictures. To me, for me, was to see the, first of all, it looks like a lot more building than we were told. We were told it was framed. That looks a little bit more of a frame. The other issue is that this is, this is the unit. That was pushed in, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, so the pictures are, the, the, the one in the middle is the, is the main unit that's kind of tucked in between the other two buildings.
Right, which seems that it's really quite far along in terms of its construction. You know, I mean, it might not have the soft carpeted tree done inside, but, you know. They, I can see they already started putting siding on it. What does that do, thus?
Just trying to clarify.
I, I'm just, well, because in, in the, we were told that there's a question of how things are presented and, and.
I'm listening.
And how, what we're actually looking at, and they may not do the same thing. Again, there's a question of, you know, I mean, reliability, you know, we're also looking at the degree, you know, that does not make for. Our questions will actually. Deal with these issues, because it's going to be a problem for others, the, the claim that the neighbors don't care. But the biggest issue is that this is, is illegality of it. And I don't know how we get around that. I really just don't know how you get around it. I mean, you know, when something was done.
The answer is Dylan will give us his thoughts on the vision.
Well, that's why I'm, I, I, that's why I'm asking, I'm raising that issue, Dylan. I, I just don't know what to do with this. I thought, you know, what. How do we handle this?
The key is that, you know, as far as this board goes, we are looking at it purely as an area variance. So, you know, well, certainly there's concerns about. You know, the building without a permit and all of that that happens, we really can't look at that, you know, as a basis for denial or for the decision. The decision really does have to be. Purely based on, you know, does it meet the criteria or does it not for an area variance? But with that, one of the big questions I know we had was with the. Black topping that was done, what the current lot coverage is, because it might be a little different than what we initially received. So I don't know if Moishe's provided that to you, Jordan, or has it tonight, just to kind of give us an idea. Because we're gonna need to know the exact coverage before, you know, a decision really can be made on that front.
You're very near, this gives not trouble with these requests.
And, and my concern with the, the black top too is that it was just done really poorly, so it was really just poured right on the, so it, it, I don't think it would hold. Hold up to any, you know, traffic or anything like that.
Yeah, that's, I had, just the walking path, or is it intended to have vehicles on it?
So Dylan, you say it depends, that Moishe should give it the exact coverage. So let's go, well, what according, what are they asking? And what do they supposedly say they have?
So right now, it looks like lot coverage is twenty eight point five, and they're looking to go up to twenty nine point six. So that's the, the difference. I want to just pull up the bulk table real quick. Yeah, because the way we do, you know, just one thing to keep in mind, when we measure this, it has to be from what's allowed. So it's not from what the coverage is currently, but it's from, you know, what is allowed in that district. So I just don't know that off the top of my head, so I'm just pulling up the bulk.
Dylan, it's fifty percent. It's not the foreign Bongo County.
Fifteen, okay, yeah.
Bongo County, it's not the bulk table.
Okay, got it. Yeah, so we're looking at fifteen percent, so it's about a, you know, in that regard, if it's twenty nine point six, it ends up being about a, you know, fourteen. Fourteen point six percent increase. So it's almost double what is allowed in the district. So that's really where the measurement comes from. But we do need to, you know, just hear a little more information on what the coverage is with the additional impervious surf, surface, so, you know, everyone can make an informed decision on that front.
In setbacks, in setbacks? That's. It's supposed to be. Twenty five on the size, right?
Yeah, so building separation is twenty five, supposed to be twenty five, and I think this is the one. It says twenty five feet to one foot, but I think it's. I think on the agenda, the number's wrong, if I remember correctly, so. Yeah, I would just clarify that, because I, I, just looking at it, I don't see any setbacks. That would be one foot.
Close the number sense of the agenda. But let me ask you just to clarify that I had a shot. When he, when he said twenty eight point five, and now they propose twenty nine point six. How does that fall into fifteen percent?
Right, one is ground coverage, the other one is setbacks.
That's, yeah, they're only allowed fifteen percent.
And they have. And they want, they want to go from ground coverage, they want to go from twenty, they want to double it to twenty nine.
Yeah, but they have already twenty eight point five, he said.
No, 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 they have. Um.
That's why I can do so many numbers, I mean, I don't know which one is which.
You want to play a fun? It's required, the regarding building cover, lot coverage requires fifteen percent. They're currently on this site, currently there's twenty eight point five. So that's what's, that's what's currently existing. We're proposing to bring it up to twenty nine point six. I believe the number is not including the road, which will be provided at my presentation.
So, so I did.
The way Dylan was, what Dylan was saying is, you have to look at it, it's allowed only fifty percent, and now we're doing another fourteen point six percent. Addition to that fifteen percent.
In terms of ground, that's, that's ground coverage. But then in terms of setbacks, who were some issues?
It's a mistake on the agenda. For some reason, it's a mistake on the agenda. It's required to have a fifty foot. Rear yard setback. We're proposing ten feet. The mistake on the agenda, I'm not sure of why that happened.
But that's a different forty, forty.
Correct.
And then on the sides?
The sides require twenty five for separation. They're, they're proposing sixteen for separation.
Okay, yeah, and that's what I just wanted to confirm, because I, I remember that there was an issue on the agenda. So it is twenty five and sixteen, and then fifty and ten.
Back is, it's supposed to be fifty, and they proposed in there.
Okay, yeah, so on this one, there is three separate variance requests that are being looked to, so it is going to be the lot coverage. It's going to be side yard setbacks, and then it's going to be the rear yard. So for each of those, you guys will need to walk through. The elements, if you do determine that you want to vote tonight, and just walk through and make the analysis for each of the three variances, so that'll be important.
We're rebounding.
Be very.
You want breaking it down?
What is ground coverage?
On you, Elian.
What is that coverage, which is twenty eight, five to twenty nine, six?
Fifteen, fifteen to twenty nine point six.
Okay, fine.
So that's almost double.
Okay, one is ground, clearly.
And then you have the back one, the backs, rear setback, seventy fifty, and then the closing ten, and the side setbacks are supposed to be twenty five and forty.
Here is fifty at them. Size is five oh.
Five oh.
Fifty.
Yeah.
And the side is twenty five and sixteen.
So there's that of three. So many amendments.
Hey, Jordan, can you unmute Elian and Jen?
And, and the agenda, what's the order of my agenda here? Presentation.
Yeah, and just, you know, as a refresher, when we go through it, you know, as far as the elements that you're going to be reviewing. For each of these, because everything it issued today is an area variance, it's going to be whether an undesirable change would be produced in character neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by feasible alternative to the variance, whether the requested variance is substantial. Whether it would have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. And whether it was self, so. Items you're focused on, you know, we've been asking questions and, you know, trying to build the record on all of those, but it's going to be important for each vote tonight, if there is. Just to run through this test and, you know, have a discussion on those items to, you know, just continue to build the record on those.
It's very hard to hear you, Rabbi. For some reason, we can almost not, I, I can't hear you for some reason. And hello, it's good to see everybody.
No, I just wanted to see, okay, so we're gonna start with, uh, common, uh, case, with our public hearings. See, we've left open a public hearing for KJ Estates, so that means we'll be starting with that. Since public break. After we approve the minutes and move to the agenda. There are no presentations, are we gonna have? We don't even refer to. I, I mean.
I think it was left open simply if people wanted to send something in the mail.
We needed to keep it open, just so there wasn't anything that would look untoward. And then, and then, so once we, that, the public hearing probably will not be much of anything, then. And then we leave for your business, which will probably order, I'll mix like peanuts and then a few interesting things. Dylan, anything else you should be advising us on?
No, I think we covered everything, and, you know, again, just. We'll do the public hearing to start. I don't know if there's anyone there to speak, but if not, then just make sure to close out the public hearing.
Let's for both of them.
For Central Park?
Because it's not listed, public hearings, this is only KJ Estates, and that.
Rabbi, for Central Park, public hearing was closed.
It was.
It's not in the minute that it was closed, Jordan. Are you sure about that?
Maybe.
From a previous person on this folder here, and Jen, Jen told me this afternoon that the public hearing was closed as well.
But there's no, there's no record of a vote, so I don't know how we would have closed it.
I'm not sure, I'm just doing what I was told.
I think. I mean, Dylan, if we have no record of a, of it being closed, then it's not actually closed, no?
Yeah, I would, you know, just out of an abundance of caution, I'm pulling up my notes from the last couple meetings. I don't see anything from the last one on that front, but if it wasn't formally closed, I would just have a vote to formally close it, just to, you know, make sure that you're buttoning that up. Let me see.
First, the first parent.
One point one to twenty five to sixteen.
It's supposed to be sixteen, it's a hypo gravity.
Yeah, so which would be, which would be twenty five to sixteen.
Please, sixty.
Sixteen.
Right, machine, okay.
But, which one?
Twenty five to sixteen, right?
Twenty five and sixteen, yes. That's really, so.
It's just the.
So what's the verdict on the public hearing for Central Park?
Yeah, I, I'm not seeing a, a formal closure, so I would just. When we get Central Park out, and then just have a public hearing.
Uh, it's a type of, we have no way of knowing.
I'm researching now.
It's since literature was, has been handed out right now, I, in some way.
You have to check.
We should.
Before you check it, let me check.
Okay, but also honestly, Dylan, you want to see, how do we send you what was just passed out to us?
What, what was passed out to you?
Sent it to Jen Edwards, and she said that the hearing was closed, and she wouldn't, she wouldn't forward any of that information. So that's why I'm here today, you know, to speak and also to give you the information.
So, yeah, that's explained. So, but you'll be giving us an information at what portion?
I don't know. If it's still open, I'll still talk.
But if it's closed.
If it's closed, then you have the information.
That it was flown.
Right, there wasn't any notification. We're very, we're confused about what's going on.
Yeah.
So want anyone to be confused?
Dylan. I was gonna. If. Can I just ask a quick question, Rabbi? Dylan, if something has not been officially closed, and it was not noticed, what are our options, right? Can we still hold the public hearing, even if it was not noticed?
If it was left open, then, you know, technically, it's still open, so you could hear it, but I mean, I, if it is left open. Then I would grab, out of an abundance of caution, probably keep it open and then actually notice it at the next. Meeting in May would be the preference, because I'm going through, I looked at. March and February notes, and I'm not seeing.
I think it would make sense to leave open if we're, if we're not following the process, then we, we have to follow the necessary processes of this board, and part of that is that we have to notice one thing when there are public hearings. And this was an error, you know, that the media, the public hearing was never closed, so it seems like we owe it to the public to keep it open.
Are we doing the actual work, my people, you know?
Say for a way he thinks on the folder that it's closed.
So all I know is Greg, when Greg was still here, he's the one that wrote down closed, closed public hearing. On this matter, I mean, it doesn't show a date, so Greg was here back last year, twenty four.
Six months ago.
Yeah, six, six months to here though. So I'm not sure how long.
But then we had a public hearing on it last month.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
So whether it's such a question, what is? If we were to extend it. And it has been noted, note, and has been noticed. Is that a problem?
Technically, you. You do only notice it for the first public hearing, so the initial one, you would notice it, and then thereafter, it's just a function of the board saying, we're keeping the public here. Or we're voting to close it, so, I mean, if it wasn't formally closed, and I'm still trying to look. Then it technically would still be open, so if it is open, because it was never closed, then, you know, it'd be, it's, it's not on the agenda, so, I mean, the, the question for the board would be what you.
If Jennifer wrote on the folder that it's closed. Does that mean that it's somewhere, if we go back six months plus, it's gonna say it's closed, or do we? Is that not a valid reason to say that we suspect it's closed?
We had an open, we had it last month, so clearly that's not accurate, right? We had a, we had a public hearing, you were all there for it, so I think we need to.
Going on for a public hearing last month, though, because I've got Graff Mueller. Sorry, my mouse keeps, the. What was it, my three sisters or daughters or that one, and then Neve Shalom and KJ Estates, I have those four, but I don't have any. Hearing notes on this one.
You're right, the last agenda doesn't have it as a public hearing. When was it closed?
I've got my note-taking device in the other room, so let me grab that, because I, normally I email them to myself, and they're not coming up, so let me see if I can track something down there.
Alright, we're at seven o'clock already, so what I would like to do is move ahead, we'll be able in the minutes, and since the first issue for the open public hearings is KJ Estates, you have time to look. And check on the status of, uh, comments, in terms of the public boards. So, just to move things along, I'd like to call the meeting's order. This is the zoning board of appeals meetings of April the twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, here in the town of Fallsburg, and as we know each time. Regardless of whatever variance are issued, they're all dependent on the availability of water and sewer hookups. And, uh, as was discussed a while back, so that, you know, even if there is a variance granted. It, and it, and this is actually material, which we want in case, in particular, where water and sewer has not yet been adequately established. That does not, however. Produce us from acting, moving ahead to consider the issue of the application for variances. I'd like to ask, do we approve the minutes of the last meeting, and I ask. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion to approve the minutes as were presented? Okay, anyone like to second? And vote? All in favor? Okay, okay. Those minutes have been approved, and now we move to our.
Rabbi, we, Rabbi, we also need to approve February's minutes.
Yes, oh, because the ones that were, because we didn't have them.
Last time.
Right, okay, so, uh, everyone had a chance to see the amended minutes of the February meeting, and we thank, we thank Jennifer for.
Putting in so much effort.
And making sure that the holes were stopped and filled. Anyone who would like to, uh, there's a motion to approve the minutes of February. Twenty twenty five. I am motion to approve. So, and now vote? Alright, all in favor? Okay, now we can move to the agenda, and in our agenda, we have open public hearing, maybe. And the first public hearing that remains open is that of KJ Estates. And we have Stelli Bizzell here. And you'll identify yourself anywhere else. I can't speak on your behalf or identify you. I, I know you well.
So I guess we're back here because we want to leave the public hearing open. Nothing really changed, other than the fact that the plan that was given at the center of the town to this meeting. Does already have those extra walkways that the county suggested, suggested, recommended be added into the plant, site plant. And with that included, we're up to like twenty eight percent of lot coverage. And obviously, as we know, we're asking to have a variance for thirty percent lot coverage, to give us that breathing room in case anything does change down the road, not that we anticipate it to happen. But just good to have in case, let's say, you want to make another court, basketball court. So should be there not to say, okay, for that, we have to go back to the zoning board to get another variance. So we've done this exact idea in a project we completed recently, it's both on forty two floors proposing. We're proposing the same exact roof covers, nothing different, whatever you. We're proposing the same exact roof covers, nothing different, whatever you see there, that's what we're asking to do here. No side walls, no windows, not enclosed, just basically to make the deck more usable when it's raining, when it's sunny and stuff like that. And it gives, you know, if we could submit again the same photos, if you want, that we submitted last time, just to refresh your memory.
Try by every day when you're broke.
I guess it's hard to get it for the people on the same, but I'm sorry. And if you note, one of the conditions we had last time on Fallsburg Holding was that you wanted to have gutters on the deck on these roofs. So we put them, you can see on all these pictures, they're getting assistance.
And so that's essentially the presentation. And the reason why we are reconsidering this as was noted before, which because of what the.
There was some kind of mess.
It wasn't, wasn't out. So really, we're hearing the same information. Um, but, um, now we are, it should be of the accuracy. Um, that's the presentation for that. Now there's a motion. Uh, we, someone like to make a, a, a motion to open. We're listening, uh, to each one separately, right?
Yeah, we, we do the public hearing first for this one and it's already open, so you don't need to motion or anything, you can just open it to the public.
Then the comments.
Yeah, and then after, after the, the public hearing, then we'll turn to board comments.
Because there was the issue of the new rules, but we haven't moved to those new rules yet. I'm doing all the public hearing, uh, of all the public present, uh, the presentations at one time.
No, no, that's what we're doing now. That's what we're doing now, but there's only two items and only one of them has an open public hearing.
I, I, that's the thing that I, there was some discussion as to whether we should do them all together. Wanted, we're doing all the presentations together?
We're doing, we're doing the public hearings together. So right now it's time to hear the comments from the public. And then after this, if the other public hearing is open, which it isn't, I have proof that it isn't, we would turn to that public hearing, but this is our only public hearing now. So now it's just open to the public to comment.
All right, because we don't know what, if we, but if we had another public hearing, because of that, that workshop, I'm still confused. What did we decide in terms of the workshop?
All the public hearings would be back-to-back, Rabbi. We would hear them all at the top before any board comment was made.
We didn't adopt that.
We, we did adopt that. We've been doing that for, for a year or so.
Yeah, that was last January when we had that discussion. And that's the, the way the planning board does it and, you know, any, any board I've represented, you typically do the hearings upfront because you do have to give them a specific time. So if you do them not upfront, then you have to kind of guess and be like, all right, it's going to be seven-thirty when the next one pops up. And then, you know, the third public hearing is going to be at eight P M. So it just gets a little clunky. So if you do them all upfront, it's easier from a notice perspective.
Okay, so now let's listen to the, uh, will become public comments. Uh, since we are still trying to determine whether or not the, uh, the other one is open. In other words, we'd be able to.
It, it's not open. I, it, we closed it last August. I found it in the meeting notes. It's the benefit of being on the computer.
Yeah, that's, I finally got to August and that's, that's why I couldn't find it in my January or February notes, so.
When, twenty-four?
Yeah, Kalman, Kalmanoff is, is closed.
Okay, all right, so now that we have had the, um, public hearing on KJ, we are now going to, um, a motion.
We don't need a motion, it's all.
Nope.
Right.
We didn't do a public hearing on KJ.
You did last, we kept it up today. So we're moving back to that open public portion.
That's it.
Okay. And who would like to comment on KJ? Please, this is Wagner, come forward and identify yourself, even if I call you by name.
Call me Pam Wagner. Hi, everyone. Good evening. Um, I don't know where to start. I'm a little nervous. I don't like public speaking, but this has to come out. I'm in opposition to granting an area variance for increased lot coverage and ongoing concerns about the rezoning and overdevelopment of KJ Estates. And speaking in strong opposition to the area variance request by KJ Estates for increased lot coverage across all fifty-two duplex units. This request is a part of a broader development that already conflicts with the intent and spirit of the Fallsburg Comprehensive Plan of two thousand eighteen. The variance is not a minor adjustment. It further intensifies overdevelopment in a rural zone that lacks infrastructure to support it. It is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. In two thousand and eighteen, the town of Fallsburg adopted a comprehensive plan that envisioned, that envisioned low-density development in areas zoned R E C like parcel twelve dash one dash sixty-four was originally. The plan aimed to preserve the rural character and natural resources of our town. The plan called the sustainable growth, especially in environmentally sensitive and transitional areas. This proposal defies the goal. Rezoning was improper and politically divided. The parcel was rezoned from REC, Low Density Residential Recreational, to H R, Hamlet Residential, under local law number four, two thousand twenty-three. Despite a planning board recommendation to deny the rezoning, significant public opposition expressed at hearings through emails and phone calls, a divided town board vote of three to two with councilperson Rebecca Pratt and Joe Levner voting no due to concerns about sustainability and infrastructure. This is a precedent and water sewer capacity concerns. Councilman Pratt warned, once we start extending water and sewer, we are setting precedent. The town's own engineer stated that option four, which includes both rezoning and sewer extension, would increase daily water and sewer demand by six thousand eight hundred and twenty gallons per day. Fallsburg's current sewer and water systems are already strained with numerous pending applications competing for limited capacity. Approving this variance while we lack long-term planning for infrastructure is irresponsible and short-sighted. The environmental review concerns, the SEQA process was segmented with the town board choosing to assess rezoning impacts separately from site-level environmental issues. SEQA regulations caution against this approach unless justified and fully protected of the environment. Many residents feel this was not the case. A key environmental issue like stormwater, surface water, wildlife, and tree loss remain under addressed. The area variance violates zoning intent. The area variance to increase lot coverage from twenty-five to thirty percent would allow enclosed decks on every unit, additional miscellaneous parking and walkways. This is not a hardship, but a convenience to the developer, which undermines zoning standards meant to limit overbuilding on constrained lots. Granting this variance will worsen impervious sur- surface coverage. Excuse me? Where was I? I'll have to repeat.
Go back to, this is not our.
This is not a hardship, but a convenience to the developer, which undermines zoning standards meant to limit overbuilding on constrained blocks. Granting the variance will worsen impervious surface coverage, potentially impacting stormwater runoff and downstream flooding. The cumulative impact of variance and spot zoning. Each minor variance adds up, more density, more demand, more environmental degradation. The community is watching as these piecemeal approvals become a blueprint for spot zoning and overbuild. The public deserves assurance that land use decisions will reflect long-term vision, not short-term developer requests. My closing appeal is I urge the zoning board to deny the area variance to increase lot coverage, reassert Fallsburg's commitment to smart, sustainable, and legal defensible planning, and uphold the comprehensive plan as a meaningful tool, not just a shell document. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Response to the public comments?
Wait, 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 Rabbi, before, before he jumps in, we need to hear from all the members of the comment of the public. He doesn't get to respond to each, uh, person.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Bonnie McCoskey.
Bonnie, sorry, could I, could I pause you for one second? Mr. Bizzell, can you sit down? Because what's happening is that it's moving to your face when this speaker is talking.
My comments are regarding the absence of covered decks in the original site plans. I feel there seems to be an evolving pattern by which developers in the town choose to omit covered decks from original site plans only to later seek a zoning variance that increases the maximum lot coverage. Covered purchases are becoming a fixture on new homes being developed or on homes recently purchased throughout the towns. The town, excuse me. This project presented with site plan for fifty-two homes and there's now a sudden realization that enclosed rear decks and miscellaneous walks or parking is needed. If this design option was included in the original site plan, there may have been an inability to construct all fifty-two homes and it gives rise to the question whether this is a strategic consideration that should be disallowed and more careful consideration be given to project design that adheres to zoning regulations at the outset encouraged. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to comment? I apologize for not recognizing that there were other voices.
Good evening, Amy Barclay, Carrie. I'm speaking on behalf of the Lockshelter Fire Department. Uh, my husband is the chief, but unfortunately he is still working. So, um, as a member of the, uh, the fire department, we have just a couple of safety concerns. Just want to be reassured that these, uh, enclosed porches don't eventually turn into bedrooms. Um, and we've seen that before. And also the means of, of egress in and out. Uh, we have multiple porches with no stairs and no ways of escapes in, in other developments that we've seen driving around. Another concern is, um, we've been told, and I, I hope that this is incorrect, with all those developments coming in on Route fifty-two and the end of Carmel Jacobs Road, there was supposed to be a traffic light and a traffic study done. And now we've heard that that is no longer happening. So we already have a majority of, of our calls, well, not a majority, they're automatic alarms at, at various camps and homes. But traffic accidents are very real everywhere, uh, throughout town of Fallsburg and Sullivan County. And they increase drastically during the summer months. So if the traffic study and traffic light has been dropped, I strongly, strongly encourage everywhere across the town to revisit that and enforce that. Thank you.
You never.
Thank you.
Anyone on Zoom? Who wants to comment? Now that we'll close the public portion and the response to the public comments.
Wait, Rabbi, are we going to close the public portion or just end the public portion for right now? Because if it's going to close, we need a motion.
Okay, um, that's a very good question because, uh, all the information that was just, uh, closer, nobody else is in. Can I respond a little bit? Yeah, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, Mr. Bizzell, in a moment, we have to close the public portion first.
I mean, we, we have, we have all this information, uh, that has been. So what is our obligation in terms of considering? What was you?
Well, if you, basically you can hold it open if you don't think you're going to, uh, make a determination today. So if you think it's going to get kicked out to another meeting, then holding it open would be fine. Um, if the plan is to, um, make a decision on the area variance, then I would recommend, you know, someone making a motion to close the public hearing and then closing the public hearing.
Uh, Dylan, if, is it possible to leave it open and then if we do vote on it, we would close it before we vote?
That's also fine. Yes, yep.
Rabbi might suggest that.
Yeah, because I'm not so clear that I want to, uh, you know, close it right this minute. All right, so let's, let's leave it open. Um, but how do we allow, if it's left open, how do we allow comments?
We just transition into the board comment phase.
And we're sort of a hybrid, but, um, we'll, we'll keep it allowed, I guess, as long as it's legal. And, um, we're going to keep it open, uh, at this point, because we're going to propose as part of this meeting. In the meantime, um, the bad caveat, I think it's, we're allowed to now listen to, uh, the, um, the response to the public comments. So we'll call upon Ms. Bizzell again.
So it's first to address the fire concerns. Obviously, we're also concerned about the same fire safeties that anyone else is concerned about, with regular people, families like ourselves living in these units. We don't want to do anything that's not safe. But frankly, most of these concerns are really building department enforcement concerns. It's, it's, it doesn't, those concerns would be whether a person, um, is look, has fifteen percent lot coverage on their house, on, on their development, or even five percent. Ultimately, if someone has a deck and they enclose it and it's not, and they're not in a safe way, obviously you have those concerns. So these are real, it's really, while they are concerns, it's not a concern when we're trying to evaluate if a person should be granted a, a, you know, a, a variance or not. So yes, we are, I mean, these are all things that, you know, the building department, when they come to do their inspections, while it's being constructed, after it's being constructed, anytime, whenever they want, they could drive and they do drive through all these developments. I've seen them many times just making loops around, getting out of the cars and walking around just to take a look. If they ever see something that's not legal, whether it's in a development, whether it's in a person's personal private house on any road in this town, obviously that's what code enforcement is here for. We're not here to do code enforcement because that's not our job. We're here to do, build according to code and build safe structures and safe developments. And if people pay and use their rights, that has to be done by, by enforcement. As far as the traffic study, I believe the traffic study was done. And I think, again, don't quote me a one hundred percent, but I believe the determination was made that it would be necessary to put a, a, a light if all the proposed developments are to take place. And then because of that, every development, including KJ, has to put money into ESTRO that there should be money available if and when that light is required based on the traffic study. So the money is there, not that they have to go look for the money at that time. So before I do, I'm getting building departments, let's say for us, there was a number, a percent of that total was allocated for the different developments. And when that threshold, whatever the traffic studies came up with, when that hits that point where it's required, then all the people, even they don't stop to build, everybody that's in front of the planning board has to put money into this ESTRO account. So it's, it's accounted for from what I understand.
Yeah, and I, I can confirm on the traffic, uh, study in the agreement that DOTs reviewed it and at some point it's going to be needed. It could be six months, a year. Um, but it's going to depend on when developments that have either been approved or in the pipeline to be approved, once they actually are approved and start getting shovels in the ground, at that point, it's going to trigger the necessity to enter into the agreement. So we do have a, uh, traffic mitigation agreement form that's ready to go, um, when the time's right, which is going to basically be the device that ensures that a light is paid for and put in with turning lanes and all of that. So it is, it is ready to be done when the time is right. Um, we're just waiting on.
Dylan.
Basically.
Sorry, question of clarification here. Are you saying that there has been a traffic study or there's simply this agreement in place?
There's been traffic studies, uh, with the planning board for specific projects. Um, and then we've got a basically total counts of the projects that have been approved and the trips per day. Um, I think it's, there's a Friday calculation and then another calculation, um, just demonstrating what the trips are going to be so we can allocate basically how the, how it's going to be paid for. So it's been done, um, by a couple of different consultants on that front. So we initially received a report from a developer and then we use the town's traffic consultant to then go through and basically do their own counts and then their own calculations for the light in need for it.
And considering that this question specifically impacts the character of the neighborhood, wouldn't it make sense for us to be able to see that traffic study regarding KJ Estates?
I mean, I have no objection to sending it around. I, I don't know that it really has an impact as far as porches versus not porches, but I, I mean, I certainly can circulate it to the board. That's not an issue.
You do, that would be great.
Now, I just want to address that as well. As far as traffic is concerned, we're not talking about adding more or less units right now. We're talking about having the same amount of units. So this is not going to affect whether we get a variance to be able to have potentially, not everyone's going to do it, but potentially to have people covering their decks will not have, will have zero impact on the traffic. So this is, that I believe is more for our planning board.
Mr. Brazil, I'd like to disagree that if you were saying that you'd also like additional parking and additional variants, additional variance lot coverage request for roads and parking, then this would be impacted by traffic.
I can argue with you. I guess 5% was to not just about decks, it was padding for any other contingencies. Exactly right, but again, when we ask the parking, it's not, we're not, this is not open for the public. It's not like there's going to be public affairs that we're looking to bring outside traffic. With, with basically, when we look for extra parking, by the way, just to add something to your information, every development, basically, there's, there's parking requirements, and almost every single development gets a variance, meaning to say is a waiver ad. I think Dylan could correct me if I'm wrong. I think it's like a waiver with a town, the plot, the planning board does not require any development to actually put in all the parking that so-called it's called for, but they do want to see that there's a place where you could do it if it's to be determined at a later date that you should have it. So that's, so this is already accommodating the parking that most likely will never happen, but here we have it already included in this account, just to be able to say that we have the availability and the possibility of adding that. A best-case scenario.
The worst-case scenario. This means to say it's a worst-case scenario, that even if, I'm saying, even if in X amount of time it will be determined that would be a good idea to have extra parking in the development, it's already predetermined where that is, where it is, and that it could be done. So again, it's not, there's no public features here, there's no supermarkets, there's no open venues for the outside people. It's people, literally, for people that live in the same, the same place.
Well, with that, everyone has commented as part of the public portion, so we move to a board discussion.
Elian has her hand up.
Eliana, sorry. Oh, you want to say something as part of, now that we're moving to the?
Sorry about that. The, there's a little noise here, so I've been muting. But I think, you know, I think this is a development that hasn't been built yet. It's, it's supposed to be, you know, conforming to the rules, and it's, it, you know, having extra lot coverage, especially when there's all of this additional potential that is not decided yet as far as, you know, traffic and all of that. It is just an issue about lot coverage, and I think we have a percentage for a reason, and that it should be, it should stay at the, the, you know, required amount. So I would, I would vote against this. Having the extra. On it. That's all.
Anyone else want to comment on the concerns that were raised?
I'm happy to comment, but I also want to give time for other people to talk.
Please, I mean, yeah. Roll ears.
Okay. First and foremost, as I've said for the last three meetings, and Mr. Brazil, may I ask you, is Glenn Smith still your expediter?
Yes, he's my, he's just, he has, he's an engineer in multiple towns, and he had to make a presentation in another, in another municipality tonight.
Thank you, and I apologize, because I have been saying for the last three meetings, Mr. Brazil, that this is an incredibly, incredibly unreal precedent that we would be setting by allowing extra lot coverage without a definitive use of what it would be used for. That is something that this board has never done, and I think that it would provide shelter and cover for future applicants to come before us and say, we just want extra lot coverage. We don't know what we will do with it. It could turn into bedrooms, it could turn into anything, and I am deeply uncomfortable with that precedent. So for that reason alone, I would vote to say, I would vote no on this product, on this variant, variance request. Now, I also shared with Mr. Smith back in February that there's a letter from Keystone Associates dated August 15th, 2023, which brings forward issues and concerns about drainage. But the idea of adding lot coverage and impermeable surfaces, when we have not received any form of, of proof that these, that these issues have been dealt with, is another concern of mine. Again, I shared this with Mr. Smith at the meeting on, in February, and we have yet to receive any form of confirmation that these issues have been dealt with. So I don't even feel that it is safe to vote on this issue until we have full information, and I've been requesting this now for three months. So you should be as frustrated as I am about that. Yes, Mr. Brazil.
Last month only we were here with Glenn Smith, I was brought up, and Glenn Smith specifically said that this is designed, that was designed for this place, was designed for more than 30%. In other words, any calculations that are made when he designed all the biopods and stuff like that is way, way over and above the requirements. So it's, it's fully, fully compensated as well, over and above.
We need to, we need to see that beyond somebody saying, yeah, it's handled. We need to see the evidence in how that handled. Sorry?
I think what Jennifer is saying, if I could just add, is that we have taken an arbitrary number to, for very possible contingencies. But we're not supposed, we have to be more accurate and guess.
So, you know, to eliminate our comments, so right now this plan shows for 28%. Over asking does 28% variance, we're not asking for 30%. We're asking for 28 for exactly what you see over here, and you won't get any surprises down the road. And if anyone ever wants to do something, we'll have to come back. To me, I just thought it's better planning and smarter to be able to know that when the person, when anything ever happens, that they don't have to come run back for, you know, a small little addition. A guy's going to put a mailbox, technically. Oh, he's, he's above his, his lot coverage, so come back.
Today it's 30, it can be 32 for somebody else.
I'm sorry?
Today it's 30 by you, it can be 32 by somebody else.
We are not disagreeing, but I'm just saying, so we let that cushion in there. So if you're not comfortable giving that cushion, so just, we're just going to ask for what is actually shown over here.
Is that enough, Jennifer?
Yes, I have one more, one more point, which is, Mr. Brazil, do you remember at the last meeting, you handed us all pictures of the covered roof from the other Fallsburg Holding property that you, that we had granted a variance request on? Do you have those pictures with you by any chance?
I gave them out again here, yeah.
Great, and sorry, are those the plan for KJ Estates, or they the, what happened for the previous one?
Identical, identical to what we proposed earlier. It's going to be identical, you see there is what you got here.
So here's my concern. When you showed us the images of what had happened on Fallsburg Holdings, I took note that it was actually different from what had happened, what we had received as far as the proposal for what would have been built, and here's why I know, noticed that. There were ceiling fans on each of these enclosed, in each of these covered decks. And now that shouldn't raise too much of an alarm, obviously that's not our issue. However, the town of Fallsburg has received notice from NICE that we're going to have rolling brown and blackouts this summer due to electricity concerns. So when I saw that the proposal, the proposed decks, covered decks that you had shown us were not what was built, that they have the capacity for electricity, they have the capacity for fans to be running, then it raised questions for me, including if there's that capacity, then what's to stop these covered decks from becoming enclosed decks and becoming spaces for habitation? And also just the, the issue of it wasn't what we had seen and it wasn't what we had approved. So I raised those two things to the board as well.
I'm really sorry to say, but I don't think that I didn't install a single fan on anyone's deck. That's what the consumer put up themselves. There would be no reason when a person is coming to any kind of a board, whether it's the architectural review board or a board over here, that's not a structural proposal. I came here and I'm an honest person. I never showed something here and did something there. To say that because people installed a fan, not me, a person installed a fan, means we did something different than what was proposed, I'm sorry, that's not accurate. That's a very, very inaccurate statement. I'm really sorry.
Wait, are people, have people moved into Fallsburg Holding? Are those, are those, oh, great.
Everyone is living there, people are living there.
Great, okay.
Not giving them putting in a light.
It's exactly, every deck has a light. When a person comes, and also if you're concerned about electric, when a person builds a house in the town of Fallsburg, do they have to tell them how many lights they're going to have in their house? I mean, it's getting, to me, it sounds really interesting. I'm saying, we have to, when you come to show a proposed deck, say maybe there's going to be an outlet also. Maybe, I don't know, but that's not, not, that's not being, that's not called being not honest. And show, these are exactly what I proposed when I came to this board for Fallsburg Holding, and we built exactly what we said we will do, and we did a perfect, beautiful job doing exactly what we said. And if somebody of a homeowner installed a fan on their, on their roof, it's no different than any house, drive by any town, any street in Fallsburg, and tell the person, you have to remove that fan because it's using more electric, please, come on. And if you know something, if that's what you want, we'll send a letter to everyone to take down their roof fans.
No, that, that's not what I'm asking, Mr. Brazil, just to be clear. I wanted to make sure, excuse me, I'm speaking. I wanted to be clear with what had happened, because it was of note to me that it was different than what was proposed. So thank you for clarifying the issue. I appreciate it.
Do we go to the next, do we go to, do we stand up now, or do we?
I think, I think you guys, it's time to vote. I think, you know, there isn't that much more information that's needed, and.
Well, I think the question is, do we want to see the proof of the drainage study? It's up to, I personally don't think it matters, because I would not vote on this regardless, but it's up to you all.
Neither, and there's no, right? No, no.
I'm just curious, why does it any different than Fallsburg Holding? Our request is not anything more, it's anything less, so it's like, and that was granted, I think this, and we performed, it's not like you said that I, I asked, I got a, I had got a variance, and I didn't live up to what I promised to do, absolutely.
It's not because we're using, we're using alternates. Where are alternatives? George, George is an alternate.
Mr. Brazil, it is, you did ask for a little bit more, so I just want to clarify that if this board is going to vote tonight, it would just be for the 28% increase for covered lots, for covered deck, I mean.
George can't vote in, I don't need to.
Everyone at the table would vote, because there's no provision or local law for voting online, so the four individuals that are at the actual meeting can vote, but Jen and Elian wouldn't be able to today. So we wouldn't. Yes, all four of you would be voting.
So all four can vote, okay, I want to put, I want to put the fire on everyone tonight. Okay, all right, so that being the case, I move that we close the, the comments, the board discussion, and we go to the questions. Yeah, we'll close the public hearing. Motion to close the public hearing? Okay, make some motion in a second. All in favor? Okay, all right, so we're going to close the public portion, and now we, as we had our full board discussion, and so we're going to go through the questions.
Rabbi, I think we have sort of just been through the, the questions, the board questions. We were able to kind of interface with the applicant, and so that would have been covered in this section. Now it's really a question of whether or not the board wants to vote tonight or not.
We don't have to, that's just a basic question. Yeah, that's a question. All right, the board, how does the board feel, the host present, everyone is comfortable with the move? Okay, we have a moving criteria.
So we need to, there needs to be a motion for what we're voting for, so it would be a 28%. 20, I, I can't motion, but I'm just saying it would be a 28% increase to allow for covered decks with the condition, as we did for the previous one, that those decks would not become enclosed decks or have, or spaces for habitation at any point.
As well. All right, so our motion, you want to, you proposed, we have proposed a motion. Make a motion to go to 28% with the gutters.
Yeah, also just make sure that the decks are to not be enclosed or used as living space. I would just add that.
From 25% of the gutters. And not enclosed. Deck's not enclosed. Dylan, is that sufficient enough?
Or habitable spaces?
Yeah, I would do enclosed or any habitable living space. I think would be the way to term it.
Okay, so we have a motion to move from 28% to 25%. Gutters will be included, decks will not be enclosed, nor will be any. 25, 28. We're moving to 28 from 25, yeah. Gutters included, and decks will not be enclosed, nor will it be any habitable living space.
And I just suggest, Rabbi, too, that you make it clear that the 28% lot coverage increase is just for the purpose of enclosed deck, oh, sorry, deck.
To accommodate, to accommodate.
Exclusively, exclusively, that we're not, we're not providing extra lot coverage just for the fun of it.
Okay, all right, now here are the questions.
Nick Deck first.
A negative declaration? Any declaration? And now, weather and undesirable change will be produced in the character of neighborhood detrimental to nearby properties. So I would say no as well. And then we got three no's, George? Dylan, does George vote?
Yes, everyone at the table is going to vote, so our two members online can't vote, but George will vote, and the other three members also will be voting.
Weather and undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood that was detrimental to nearby properties. Can this benefit the SARS? The benefits of be achieved by the applicant by another method other than the area variance? No. George? Whether the requested area variance is substantial? You know?
So I think I'm going to say yes, but it's because.
Whether those variants will have an adverse effect on the physical environment condition. Whether those variants will have an adverse effect on the physical environment conditions in the district of the neighborhood?
No.
Um. No valley, no, George?
My opinion is, how can you make the decision when we don't know when it's gonna be even built? Because they're withheld because there's no water in the sewer. If it takes three years from now, how can you make the determination in three years that this doesn't affect?
I was about to ask the result. I was on an issue. Eventually, they're gonna get pulled, or they might gonna get approved. So it's not because we're telling everybody to go. Do you say no?
I can't, how can I determine what's gonna happen in the future? If it's gonna impact the neighborhood or not?
Well, it has to be a yes, right now, so I guess you can go now. Uh, was the alleged difficulty self-created, which should be relevant, but not necessarily, doesn't necessarily conclude, uh granting the variance? Yeah, this is self-created in my mind.
Yeah.
Now, um. David?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, yes. Alright, um, do we have a motion to approve or? Do we deny?
Motion to approve.
So.
Yes, I say.
Now we're at a vote, uh now I have to make. I uh. George, you?
No.
I'm gonna say, um. Just vote for. Motion to approve.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for your consideration.
Rabbi, can you read back the uh vote for me? I just couldn't hear yeses and nos, just so I can have them for my notes.
Motion to move to twenty eight percent from twenty five percent to accommodate exclusively covered deaths. Gutters will be included, the decks will not be enclosed, nor um uh will there be any habitable living space? In those, in uh.
You you took a couple minutes, a couple seconds ago, just for the motion to approve. I I didn't hear who said yes and who said no, so I was just.
Yes, it was Ellie, David and myself.
Okay. Alright, thank. Alright, so. With that one hand, we move on to the next one.
Alright, now I'm handling this one since we don't have a public meeting. We just have your information. Alright, so how do we move with this one, since where there is no public?
We just hear from the applicant and then there'll be time for board comment.
I mean, I'm looking at my chief, we have seven steps, you just uh. Okay, so we we have no public portion proposed, it's proposed already. Um, and now we'll just hear from um.
Hello, Rabbi Zeller, thanks for the word, to run Zoom. Um, I've been here before, I wasn't at the last meeting, I had a conflict, but Rabbi Babad is here as well as Moshe, Moshe's been doing most of the interaction with the building department on Central Park. It is uh not to rehash everything, but this was a matter of a building that was built uh without a permit. There's a gonna be an enforcement action that's not gonna be handled by this board, but our goal here is to bring this into compliance, and since that time, and since that building without a permit occurred, Mr. Raz hired me, he's hired engineers, architects, sorry, Mr. Adi, he's done a lot of work, including I've, you know, I met with the building department. Greg, we walked through the property in the fall. Um, since that time, there was a, I'll call it the main house. I'll show you my plan. Um, was there a name to that building, I thought? It was in terrible disrepair. The roof was almost completely destroyed, it was in very bad shape. We met with Greg, Greg's position at that point was he wanted to see that building either torn down or rehabilitated. It has now been rehabilitated, I understand, is there some punchless items and some uh building code issues that are being worked on, but those are actively being worked on. Um. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Adi, who's gonna go back and forth with the requested variances and what we've accomplished so far and some of the options. Um, I think the overall goal for us tonight is to hopefully get these variances approved so that close out the enforcement item and allow this this, you know, operation to continue. I would note that various main colony runs each summer for the most part without incident. Um. We're joined by three each.
David Moshiat here. Um, at the previous meeting, the board requested a site visit for this property, which we had. I don't remember the exact date, we had a site visit. Um, I was there as well as David. We went to do the property and we did see over there, there's a very big slope behind this property, meaning that regarding the variances, the very yard setback, there's a very good slope over there, which is in the pictures, I didn't get a chance to see them, I know this picture taken of it. Um. Which means it's not buildable there, so the letter that we have in the growth showing that 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 they don't have a building there, very good slope over there. Um, at the time, we also confirmed the unit count regarding a previously proposed fourth variance property. If this variance granted, this repainting, the painting will be moved, that's a good point that Jennifer had, the painting will be moved. Um, if this variance is granted. The the board had a very good question about the road. This road over here is currently a nine foot road, the board was very concerned about this road. The road is not required as per New York State Fire Code, there is no code requiring this road to pay apparatus. Five oh three point one point one does not require this road. Not sure if George, New York Jordan wants the same, but it is not required to have such a road. Therefore, there is no, this road, they can make build it, I mean, as additional law coverage, which I'll get in a minute, but behind there is no reason why fire truck has to get up there. Um, and it's not any worse than it previously was, that's where there is the board would like, we could remove the road. But it's not any worse than it previously was. Regarding the new law coverage with this road, this we're requesting variance now for twenty nine point nine, we're previously requesting for twenty nine point. Fair. Twenty nine point six. Uh, this points me twenty nine point nine. We did, um, we're trying to obviously minimize the amount of variances needed from here. We did come up with a little bit of idea to remove the existing basketball court, which is currently just a paved area, there's no basketball court there. If we remove the basketball court, we will not require a variance for that coverage. But we heard the lack of which actually be less than it previously was. Previously was twenty eight point five, it'll be twenty eight point four, with the road and this house over there. This is a three thousand forty square foot basketball court. That will be eliminating the need for this variance for the lack of it. However, it'll be taking away some area for playing, that's a decision that the board can make. Um, and also, we're looking to obviously minimize the amount of variances required. There is another option, which is up to the board, how they would like to do it, to connect the units. To connect with this new proposed unit, the neighboring units over there, which would be a zero for separation, which is allowed. However, regarding fire safety, it can be a lot worse, but it is allowed as per code. And from a technical perspective, it will be reducing another, the need for another variance. It's something that the board should consider and um, guess what, according to. I think that's our. I missed anything, how we want to.
So I just want to follow up with a couple of points, you know. When told when you become a doctor, the first thing they say to you is do no harm. Um, in this case, there are, there are certainly things that this applicant can do to lessen the variances. I'm not sure that they don't do harm to the community and the and the applicant themselves. Attaching three buildings instead of fireproofing any shot at those buildings as they exist probably creates a situation that's more dangerous, not less dangerous with regard to fire safety. Um, you know, the road is not, you know, to the New York State with, but it does in fact allow, you know, for more emergency access, not less. Um, you know, getting rid of a basketball court rather than granting a variance, you know, sure, we can get rid of a basketball court that just takes away, uh, you know, a feature for the for the for the kids. I mean, at at the end of the day, Mr. Babad is, as a rabbi, I apologize, has apologized, he has been before this board, he recognizes there will be punishment from a different tribunal. Um, the goal here, and I think in the last year, I'm gonna say that I've been involved since early fall. I know that there's been interaction with the building department through lots of ups and downs on the town and on our side, but a lot has gotten accomplished. And I think we're at the point where I would can, I would ask you to consider granting these variances. Um, one other thing I'd point out, um, the distance between twenty one and the property line, the distance between the new building and the property line, about ten feet. So it's, you know, within inches, so it's, there really is no increase in the non-compliance with regard to the distance to the property line. And in that regard, as Christopher Adam said, Cardinal Grove has offered to participate in whatever shape they need to, but at the very least, they have they have no objection to the granting of variance.
You're referring to the side, which side?
The rear yard.
Yeah, the rear yard, but how are you addressing the side?
Issue. Side issues, I mean, it's a sixteen post separation, which.
Oh, I apologize, I'll probably call over that. Now, I don't know if there's any any further conversation between Mr. Adi and the building department. When we let, when I did walk with Greg on the site, what he at the time was going to recommend to this board, I believe, you know, as an officer of the court, I'll just tell you, our discussion was that both buildings, the new, the new buildings, and twenty seven, the new building and twenty six, both of those sides would be fire protected to a two hour fire rating on each side. So be four walls, four walls altogether. Would be taken apart and then, eh, you know, I don't know exactly what the materials are, but it'd be brought to a two hour fire rating on each side. For the business.
The fire spread perspective, obviously this issue with fire department access, the fire protection, fire spreading perspective, this, that would be more efficient and without that, it's just eleven feet required. With these, with a four hour rating and two hour rating on both walls, a lot less than eleven, than eleven feet. From a fire spread perspective, it is safe. A fire department, separate issue, but from fire spread is.
And it's far more distance than almost.
It was supposed, it was supposed to be twenty five.
Correct, that's a local, correct, that's for fire department.
And you.
I'm saying from a fire spread, issue from a fire spread, from one of the fires spreading from one unit to another, the code of eleven, New York State. Eleven is a zoning law, local zoning.
We've been through this, it's it's over fifteen, we've looked at the fire, at the New York State code before, it's not eleven, Mr. Atia.
And we're pretty sure that. That's the minute something about that, but. And that's that's sixteen, I'd like to be recent.
This is, uh, the distance between these two buildings is larger than distances that are free existing on the property and would include two hour fire rates on each on each side. So not on one side, and all, the two existing buildings and the new building, all with a two hour fire rate.
Because they're not conforming ones? That's the, with the following.
Remember that.
That's, that's.
But Rabbi, they can be attached and then you just.
It's gonna be much worse.
It it, you know, if there's a fire, it's actually much worse, in my opinion, that's, you know, that's my point.
I feel that point makes you, you really want to.
Ah, well, that's, you're, we're always gonna hold your feet to the fire, your zoning board appeals, we're here for relief, that's the whole point. Unfortunately. Look, I I I understand the position that you're in.
We're in a very difficult situation because, you know, I'm semi semi germinical body and the issues of trust, and I mean, I I I I.
Look. Perhaps we could hear from the few firefighters that are qualified, that's the fellows which are safer actually. I mean.
We have a.
We have a chief.
Well, public, public's closed.
Now remembers the grand view, and you were supervisor.
Yeah, well, I'm wrong, that's.
So, right, and there were serious firewalls, and that whole thing went. Nineteen hours, we were there fighting that fire. Whole thing went. So you're decreasing the sizes between buildings, you're saying you're increasing firewalls, remember the grand view. Thank you.
I'd also like to say, um, having been there, the the, there's trees and things right up against that building, so anything that you know, catches is, there's plenty of fuel there on all sides. Um, there was also a lot of debris, um, that's, you know, easy, easy ways to to move it. I mean, the whole property is non-conforming and it did not really change the um, the character of that uh land, I mean, it is, it is consistently non-conforming, I will say that, um, across the board, so.
Between the buildings, so if there's any trees or jobs in between that you're worried about, that can be conditioned.
Yep, and and that same, and that uh the tank, as I think was mentioned already, the um.
That will be up. We're talking about.
There was a time when this board would not hear applications from properties where there was litter or debris. Now, I didn't do the site visit, but I'm grateful to Elian for sharing with the entire board her photos, and there was an abundance of debris and trash. Uh, I don't know if we want to return to that precedent of not hearing applications where there's open violations as well as litter issues and trash issues. Um, but I would be up to that.
Stop work order was issued and Greg was on the property, he did not want any workers near the building. So that will, the building is just framed. That debris is part of the construction process, and if you want it removed, we can have workers on the property to remove it this week. But it really is mostly its construction debris on a partially completed building.
About that. I'm looking at these photos, Steve, and they are not construction debris, unless you use solo cup for construction, I do not.
Alright, alright, I I give you my word that, and I would ask the building, I I'll accompany the building department there within a week. And there may, if there's garbage there, you know, I will step off.
Make clean up a condition too, as a a way to kind of.
Very unfair.
And I would be falling on my duty where not to raise my protest right now for the fact that this has been allowed to actually exist. I don't know, I can't in good conscience even move forward in this discussion when I see what we call an aura kind in you. This is ugly, and nobody in their right mind would ever come to a respectable board like this that has to make uh some judicious decisions. And it presents something like this, this is bad business. This is foolhardy. And it's, I don't know how to convince me otherwise. I mean, you know, counsel, you apply to, you know, should know better. I look at this and I keep.
Rabbi, I'll tell you what. Rabbi, I.
I I.
If that's, I I'll I'll look at my client as well, that property will be cleaned up and we'll come back next month.
I can't believe that you didn't do anything when you when you walk with him, that you're applying to walk with him last meeting, knowing that that would have been a smart thing to do. What are you waiting for? The dough?
There's gonna be work, look, it's every.
I mean, it's tough for us as people of conscience, me, it's tough for me as a person of conscience to to look at this and not worry about so many other things, this is a big ask. This is a big ask in terms of history, I'm thinking buses. And and there's still two buses in front of your property, I'd like to know what those buses are doing off season. Remember, buses.
Will they stay on topic?
Rabbi, with respect, we acknowledged it, it's been brought up to this board twice, it's been twice apologized for. And there, this board is is not a tribunal that 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 is is here to find or to, that's not your your role. He is, he built without a permit, he's acknowledged that, he apologized for it, and it's wrong, I've set it on the record. And there will be a judge and jury to to go over that and to and to determine what the so what the, to prosecute and to determine what the what the fine will be. Um, in this case, what's happened since, and since I got involved, is there's been, and I apologize for the garbage and my client is here, I'm sure he'll apologize for the garbage, and it will be cleaned up this week. And, you know, but. And, you know, but overall, the site has been vastly improved since this, this issue happened. The building that was falling down is now almost subs, it's substantially complete. There are some punchless items that Moshe's working with the building department on, but it, the, and the property maintains itself each summer pretty well, I, I'm not aware of any overall complaints from, uh, on the, on, on the colony each summer, for garbage or empty house. During an off-season situation, it's not, except, I agree with you, but this is not during, I just, we're just coming out of the winter and honestly.
We're, we're in burn and, for a bit.
Well, I'm thinking, on the site anyway, but.
I want to echo the rabbi's concerns, I'm sorry, Steve, I, I, the, the audio was cutting out, so I wasn't sure if you were done, are you done?
Yeah, absolutely.
I want to echo the rabbi's concern, but there's, it, there are issues here with the variance requests themselves that, that a dangerous precedent would certainly alter the, the environment, uh, alter the safety of the neighborhood, alter the environment, it's certainly self-created, there are so many criteria by which this would not pass our, pass our test. I also want to just share, um, that the solution that was presented regarding the basketball court was the original solution that the planning board had agreed on, that the basketball court was going to be removed and a new unit would be built there. So it's not about doing no harm, it's about what was originally agreed upon, and I just want to set that for the record because though I don't think this board should approve these, uh, variance requests, I also just want to make sure that we're not receiving obfuscated or, um, information or receiving misdirection as far as what was originally agreed upon. Now, the last thing that I'll just say, if I may, is that previously, at the last meeting, I shared my deep concern that there was an open construction site in the middle of a high-density residential area. And Illyon's, um, photos seem to confirm that it is certainly an open construction site, there are open windows and open doors that are not closed off. And I continue to say that is a massive safety concern even in the off-season and something need to be done about that. Thanks, that's all my comments.
Does the building department, we can close the building, we were directed not to.
You can close the building with tape or with, you know, stanchions, you don't even need to get in there.
If, if, if it's this board's wish, what I would suggest, rather than doing work twice or damaging the building more, let us finish, let us button the building, as they would say in the building, put windows and doors in and wait until the next meeting, they'll do that. I mean, that would secure the building.
They're, by law, there's a stop work order, because they close everything, say, I don't know why.
Over there now, I do want to clarify that, not like this kid's playing around there right now, it is off season.
I believe there's construction fence around the last, last season, even sold out the fence, and someone inviting men.
Right, but I, I also, I, I think, I think if you're focusing on the actual, like, what the ask is and focus on what we as a board have the option to actually address, I think it's a question of, is this, are you, are we voting on this now and is, is it something that we want to, um, pass or not? I think it's like, you know, dealing with all these things that we can't control is a bit.
Thank you, I also want to just address an earlier point I brought up, Jen, as, as per table six oh two, New York State Building Code, um, they require, um, a type DB construction, does that have between a ten and thirty-foot separation, which would allow eleven-foot separation, I'm not sure where we got number fifteen from, but New York's table six oh two says eleven-foot separation. I'm sorry.
I have no idea.
You know, the basketball court, saying you can take away the many uh, from something doesn't sit well with me because you're basically reducing the, a lifestyle or quality of life matter. It's like saying, you're gonna take away.
Well, my point, that's why, my point in bringing it up was, and by the way, it, it is being really just used as a recreation area, not as a basketball court, just a big area where the kids do stop foot. At the end of the day, if we took it out, it, it's just be grass. I mean, it's, it, if that's what the, if the board would rather that, that's what, I'm trying to look at practical re, practical results that don't impact the quality of the, of the neighborhood, the quality of the site itself. And in reality, what the ask that we're asking to me are not substantial for the reasons I brought up. There's already a ten-foot rear yard that's been there thirty years, that building's been there. There's already, you know, less than sixteen feet between a bunch of other buildings, that's been there over thirty years. Those don't have, you know, fire separation, what we're offering here in addition is to make it safer than the existing condition, and the, the other option is to enclose them back together. And honestly, I don't, I don't think that's a safer option, but it's up, you know, the board holds that decision in advance. If, if you want, if you, if, if the decision is not to grant the variance, my client has only a, that, my client's only other option is to then connect the building so it gets rid of the, gets rid of the distance.
So you're saying, so that if, you're, you're basically saying that if we don't, both, is you're gonna do that, so, so that you can.
We would have to solve, we would have to make the property conform, so I, it's not as, we're not being mean, I'm not. Well, there, uh, we'd have to, Rabbi, with all due respect, this is not, not necessarily a threat, it's simply that we'd have to bring the property into compliance. So how do we do that? That's one way to, that's, that gets rid of.
Well, this building never.
This building.
It never should be built, and I think most of us.
Fine for that.
Most of us would just like the building to be torn down.
Well, uh, there's, the, if the town cho, chooses that route to try and have that happen, that, that's sort, again, not, that's not the per, and I would ask Noel to jump in, that is not the purview of this board to punish my client.
No, the, and we, we had this discussion, I think every game is bent on for.
In the best interest of the town and decide whether or not you want to grant a variance, but you're not a tribunal that gets to find.
Well, you're semi-juridical, aren't we?
You get to decide on variances, and what I'm saying, what, what I'm trying to say is, we're trying to give you options that we think are in the best interest of not only our client, and then obviously, it's in the interest of our client, what's in the best interest of the town?
Tell me how this is in the best interest of the town.
You have, well, instead of having one large building and it has no fire separation, you have three buildings with two-hour fire separation between them. With regard to, that, you know, with, you, the only one that, that is just, it's no different than what exists already, there's a ten-point four-inch, ten-foot four-inch separation between twenty-one and the rear property line, and there's a ten-zero between this and this one. So it's a matter of four inches of the difference between what's existing and what we're asking for on that rear yard.
It's something that the town benefits.
Well, that, it, it doesn't, it certainly doesn't.
It's detrimental to the town, it has a sense of dangerous person.
I do want to bring up a suggestion that the board, it's a suggestion for the board to consider. We are open to the idea of putting in a NFPA thirteen compliance sprinkler system, into this building, and that's something that would help the board make a decision, so that is an option.
I mean, that's a, that's a huge offer.
Joe, Joe likes that idea.
Yeah, no, of course.
I think one thing that I want to be clear about is that it, our, our, our role is not to determine what would happen if we say yes, or if we say, or sorry, if we say no, our role is to determine whether or not these variances should be requested. And so Steve and Moshe, what you're talking about is something that you would need to determine and you need to determine with other levels and other board, because the truth is, is that you can't make that property complying with the current zoning. That, that, uh, new building compliant with the current zoning unless you, you tear down something. Or you move the building, or you, you, you know, there's, there's a number of different issues, so I just want to say these, this conversation about what would happen is a little bit irrelevant, and I want to echo Illyon's beautiful, always keeping us on task to say maybe this is just worth taking to a vote.
But this is worth taking to a vote?
No.
Not worth taking.
No, no, I think she said worth.
I said, where, it's worth just voting on this, in my opinion, to say no, but it's worth just having the vote rather than extending this contentious argument.
Yeah, I think at this point, there's enough information, data and discussion where, you know, everyone's kind of fully up to speed on what the issues are, what's being asked for. And at this point, really what's going to drive it is, you know, factors that have been determined long ago for area variances, it's not going to be, you know, what's best for the developer, it's not punishing because it was built without a permit, you know, this board should have someone make a motion, go through each of the variances, run through the actual criteria of an area variance, and that's gonna tell the tale of you know, whether these should be approved or not, so I would agree with Jen on that front.
But didn't we take liberties with another case, uh, a while back, uh, true, Scott's case?
It wasn't us taking liberties, we just said no, and then it came back to our board because we were the, the, the semi-judicial board that said no.
Oh, we said no there because we, we felt that.
Yes, and then it went to the, it went to the New York State Supreme Court, and there, there, there was conversation about it. So we said no, and it's fine to say no in this situation, Rabbi, if that's what you think.
You have every, you, you, it's your job to decide on the variance or not, or not to grant the variance, it's just not your, it's not, it's not this board's role to punish.
But we have been given.
Well.
And, and we were not advised otherwise, I'm glad.
We, no, we, we, I think we were, I think we, we were just clear that that was a no for, for obvious reasons, and to me, a lot of those reasons were precedent setting and regarding the actual issues of what it was doing to the neighborhood, doing to the property, fire safety, environment, blah, blah, blah. And I think we might want to think about voting, just bringing this to a vote, stopping the conversation.
Yeah, and just to be clear on that, there, the board did go through the elements of area variance determined that it shouldn't be provided based on the elements, the board didn't just reject it out.
That's what we told, tell me to do.
Anything out of hand, and actually, I would advise you to never, ever do that in your official capacity, particularly as a zoning board, where it's very clear that you have tests that you're supposed to be applying. Um, it kind of makes the job a little bit easier that you have these strictures that say, thou must start here, ask this question, and this one, and this one. And then based on the yeses and nos, you have the answer as to whether you should apply the variance or not, so I absolutely uh, wouldn't, am not and would not ever give that advice to say no to a project because they built without a permit or because you feel, you know, a certain way, it's, uh, there's rules and strictures and case law that lay out how this process is done, and that's typically how we vote on all of these, so I, I don't know why it's a discussion now to ignore what we do every meeting to review these applications.
I think we should bring it to a vote.
And I, I was agreeing to a party. I would like to just add one more thing, we could look at each variance individually, as the variance, for example, the rear yard setback with that fix the criterias and not necessarily that building was built illegally, we could get each setback, we could get each variance as.
Yeah, we're, and they should be taking.
That's a question, that's a rear yard setback.
Yeah, we, we usually go through variance by variance and vote, and I think we should do that in the situation.
Uh, the first variance with regards to lot coverage, remove twenty-nine point six to twenty-eight point five.
It's actually twenty-nine point nine because of the additional road that was built without our, yeah, without a permit.
Twenty-nine point nine, another point three percent. If the board, I have to remove that point three percent.
First, uh, variance. Uh, do we have a motion? No, I actually.
And we have to say negative declaration first.
Declaration, neg, negative death?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Who, who made the motion for negative death?
David, uh, everyone, uh, um, the second? Second, hey, everyone favor? All right. Uh, whether or not, now we are going to, uh, criteria, whether an undesirable change would be produced in character of the neighborhood detrimental to the nearby properties. And, um, no. George?
I understand.
Um, can the, uh, benefit be sought by the applicant by another method other than the area variance?
Can, sorry, we, online, we couldn't hear what the answers were, so can you read them back and everyone try to be a little louder? Three no.
And the benefits are achieved by the applicant. That sentence, double it, I've written it twice, can the benefits are achieved by the applicant by another method other than the area variance?
Their less desire, hopefully, there are.
Yes, yes. And, and.
Yes.
It was three of us, George?
Yes.
And whether the requested area variance is substantial? Yes. Yes, yes. Whether the proposed variance will have an effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood and district. Yes, George, yes. Was the alleged difficulty self-created? Yeah. Yes. Yes. Uh, motion to approve or or deny that dispersed, uh, variance? I've already put myself in the, you know. This is not easy. George, we'd like you to, you know, come up something with that. Uh, then, uh, since no one wants to make a motion, uh, to approve the variance, is there a motion not to approve this first variance?
We can't hear up here, I'm sorry, it's just unclear, can you all be a little bit louder?
You're not hearing anything. Can I, can I make one further appeal to the board?
Wait, no, I'm sorry, wait, I'm sorry, we're in the middle of voting, I don't think that we usually let applicants come forward and, and make a further appeal, Steve, maybe after, before the next variant. But I, yeah, I think that that would make the most sense here.
I was quiet when you spoke, I would, just allow me to speak once.
It's just out of turn, we're, we're in the middle of voting here, Steve.
You're not, nobody made a motion, and it's, and, and, and there was been no motion made. Has there been a motion?
Rabbi, have you, you can make a motion, Rabbi, just because you're the chairman, you can also make a motion, no?
I know, and.
Mr. Chairman, may I adjust the board, pardon you?
Yes, I grant you that.
My only suggestion is that if the concern is the, if one of the concerns that's driving this is the amount of garbage or debris on the property, allow us the opportunity to, in, in each time we've come here and I'm working with the building department, we've followed every one of their directions and getting things up to code or up to standard. If you would like to put this off a month, we will get it cleaned, we will certainly. If you would like to put this off a month, we will get it cleaned. We will certainly have the building department come down for inspection and invite anyone else on the board to come down and inspect themselves. And we can come back next month and maybe somebody would be more comfortable making a motion. And I'll step back. I apologize, Jen.
No, I appreciate that. I, I, I'm holding my tongue because there's stuff that I'm not at liberty to share right now, but that I think is material to my ability to make a decision. And I haven't had a chance to discuss it with counsel. But in light of some of the discussions, I, I feel that I'm compromised, not of my own doing, but of the applicant's doing. So, um,
We're suggesting this.
And I, and I, and I, therefore, I think what you have, I think what you have actually suggested is very good. I think with more time, uh, I, I just think that there's a stimulus as the legislative condition approved.
Condition that is on.
We'll give him put up a bond.
I don't want, I, I mean, I, 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 I think that there is. Then could we put up a bound and conditionally approve the, the, if, if everything is, uh, met, Matt?
I think the question is.
Yeah, I mean, I, if the chair is saying feels compromised for a, a certain reason, I mean, and that's just coming to light right now. It's the first I've heard of it. I mean, that's a little concerning. So maybe it does make sense at this point to hold off until the next meeting, because I, further discussion certainly needs to be had. So I can understand and then what the board needs to know on whatever the issue is that is unknown to me at this moment. I think it makes sense to kick this out to next month. I mean, that's, uh, concerning, uh, to say the least.
So then can we make a motion to table till next month?
Yes, absolutely.
I'll move that forward. All right, uh, I, I, I think. And a more expansive discussion and, um, and some other, um, discovery. Um, that I'm going to.
Yeah, was there a second motion?
Is this for all three variances or for this specific group? Would the board feel comfortable to vote on any of the variances?
There any specific that the board would like to see as accomplished before? Obviously the garbage should be cleared up.
I also think the building should be cordoned off for safety reasons.
Yeah, if you had a fence last year, can you just put a fence around it now, especially if folks are going to be there just for safety?
Ellie will work directly with the building department to make sure it's secure. And we'll have them inspect it and bring you photos.
Are we looking for caution tape secured or looking for gates around it if we could?
Caution tape is not going to stop the unit from, uh.
Right, I mean, we should mention that earlier. We really want to secure the building. It should be windows and doors, but if.
No, a fence would suffice.
Building department wants. We were, my client offered that. We can't do any work.
I understand.
We made that offer.
The good news is that it's not open.
I appreciate that.
There's something that's bothering the board tonight. I'd like to discuss that.
It's, look, I. No, I, I understand. I, I, I've sat on the planning board. I represent planning and building board. It each have specific roles. They have to, you know, you have to be careful as, as you, as you can't prejudge zoning. I appreciate you taking time and contemplation. I need some time. Thank you.
Is there any additional information that the board would like or anything we like to have provided members possible prior to the next meeting?
I don't know. I, uh, I'm there. Any?
I'm just in inquiry right now.
Is there any other members that have any other requests prior to the next meeting?
No, I'm good. The fence is sufficient thing.
Yes, thank you.
Are you making a motion? I'm making it. Yeah, I know. This is it. There's no other business. Is, do we have the, uh, do we have a motion to agree?
Good night, everybody.
Night. Thanks all.